I don't know, your TV is good anytime.
Mayor Glenn Grant. Councillors Claude McIntosh. Sid Gardner.
DC Madam.
Dean Hollingsworth. We did have him, he must be trying to get on again. Councillor's cutting in the bar.
Is out.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
And did it better on. And we're waiting for the councillor Dean Hollingsworth to come back on. Mr. Mayor, as well as councillors Carr and Dupan.
Oh, wait a minute, there's no rush. Yeah, I'll wait till I get hungry, Glenn. Once I get hungry, that's it. Hey, Dean is on now. I see his lips moving, but I can't hear any audio from.
Here I'm muted. Okay, we're on the phone with councillor Carr now.
Mr. Mayor, where are we starting today? We missed the police budget yesterday, are they in today?
No, they've already had that.
Can you hear me now, Manon?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Two different settings on this laptop than the other one, so.
Okay, well, you found the right ones.
No, I want to try the headset, so I'm gonna probably in a few seconds, I'm gonna ask you if you can hear me, and if not, then we'll ditch the headset, how's that?
Sounds good. Oh, oh, wait, we can.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna lose the headphones and just do it old school instead.
Could have motion to adopt the agenda, basically a continuation of budget discussion. Councillor McIntosh, councillor McDonald, all in favor? I was carried, thank you. Excuse me, we know we said we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akasasne. Any disclosures of interest? Saying none? Have a motion to go in the committee of the whole. Councillor McDonald, councillor Gardner, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. We'll start off with some information from yesterday's meeting with Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following a few questions, both myself and Mr. O'Brien have some responses to a few councillor questions. The first one was regarding the use of federal gas tax for our social housing capital projects. Just to note, the federal gas tax was renamed in 2021 to the Canada Community Building Fund. So that's what you'll hear going forward in our reports to council. The, the Canada Community Building Fund, like the federal gas tax, cannot fund or social housing, those would not be eligible capital projects. There is a number of areas that we can use gas tax for, as councils aware. For the most part, we've used it for roads, roads and bridges and sports, recreation, culture, also tourism, public transportation, wastewater drinking water, solid waste management, etc. But it cannot be used for long-term care or social housing. I want caution council with using reserves for housing projects at this time. For 2022, we have kept our housing budget flat to last year. We are planning to develop a 10-year asset management plan with a financial strategy for our housing portfolio. And in the past, we've really used these reserves only for emergency purposes, such as the, when an elevator failed or needed to be replaced. As our housing providers, including Cornellary Housing Corporation, did not carry any balances or additional funds on their books for these, these occurrences or purposes. So that's in, in response to one question from council. And I see Mr. O'Brien is here to answer another.
Yes, sir, here, Mr. Mayor. To your question, councillor Gardner, in regard to the Emerald Dash Bowl program, now called the Tree Canopy Management Program. It's recommended that the funding remain at the submitted amount. 2021 was a different difficult year due to COVID. So there were some issues in the availability of getting certified contractors to perform the work. And saying that, 2022, it's anticipated that we will have a larger than expected workload due to the backlog created from 2021. So a reduction in the funding would result in work not being completed.
Thank you, Sean, I appreciate your response. Thanks, thanks for going out and getting the answer.
You're welcome, thank you.
One more item, Mr. Mayor. Though the Bank of Canada did not increase its rate today from 0.25, it was noted that the economic recovery is progressing and rates are scheduled to go up in 2022. In reviewing that and understanding that rates will increase before the end of the year, this would mean that interest rates would increase for the cities at cash on hand, including the progress fund. And so we would recommend that we add $75,000 to the budget. Probably 50,000 for city investments and 25,000 for progress fund interest. And, and include that on our, our overhead sheet that, that we present where we can show what that change would be for council. And for the, for the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Question, Elaine, councillor McDonald, sorry.
So obviously, that's gonna show up as revenue, you're suggesting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure if I have an ability to share the screen at this time. Last. Miss.
Yeah, you should have access now, Tracy.
Wonderful, let me just see if I can pull. Share. So as the overhead illustrates, the average residential property would have an increase of $78.14 or 2.90%.
Thank you, Tracy, questions? Elaine, did, were you finished?
No, I did just check the items that were removed from the budget. Obviously, 75,000 is a little short for a splash pad in Menard Park. Although I'm so sorry to see it relegated to a future project. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor McIntosh.
Question through you to Tracy. It's a double whammy, isn't it? We're gonna get a little more interest on our money, but this is affect our debt. According to David Dodge, the former Bank of Governor, Governor of Bank of Canada, he expects a significant increase from the end of the year.
We did see at the end of 2021 that our borrowing rates have had increased a little. They're still very, very good, but yes, normally there is a consequence as interest rates go up for income generation, borrowing rates go up as well.
Councillor Gardner.
Sorry, Tracy. So what would that do with the payments on the Benson Center? Would that help to bring in more money, the interest rates being higher? Would it help us there, instead of the taxpayer just paying the balance, the difference?
The same for the Benson Center, we think we'll put, the progress fund would, would earn a little bit more money as well. So we're going to add about $25,000 to that revenue line in our budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Towndale.
Again, Mr. Mayor, through you, Ms. Bailey, I had a question about reserve schedule. Again, my page number seem to be a little different, mine says 227, but I think it's 194 in the printed one. Under the land reserve, we still show a negative balance there, but I believe we're in the process of finalizing sales on land. But I don't see that money as indicated as coming in this year. The reason I ask is because the summary of reserves says it's estimated to be at these amounts for 31 December 2022, so that would be the end of this year. Are we waiting to put in those estimates, or?
Thank you for the question, councillor Towndale. Yes, the city has sold land in the business park. I believe council approved those bylaws at the last council meeting. So at the time this book was put together, that or those agreements have not been finalized. And I'm sure Mr. Peters can speak to whether all of the documentation is in place for those sales to, to go through at this, this time. And that is not the, the, the 2 million that we are below budget right now, are below the reserve amount. I'm not positive that that was one parcel of land that we had bought back, that we have subsequently sold. But this, these funds that represent the sale of those properties are earmarked to be used for the extension in the, in the business park, that capital project.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, you know, I understand what, what they're gonna be meant for, I just wanted to ask why they weren't present on the, the schedule yet.
It's a timing thing, the book went out before the, before those agreements were finalized.
Bob, did you have something to add?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, I would just add that typically the receipt of the, of the final sale amounts will, will come in in due course, following due diligence, and there's different schedules for each land deal. And so the, the property that's being sold north of the 401 have a different timeline, but typically it's 90 days after the APS is cosigned by the city. And so we wouldn't expect to see the majority of those funds show up until realistically in, in, until later this year, so maybe the second quarter, for sure.
A good, Justin, or councillor Towndale?
No, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Gardner. Yeah, seeing Bob on the screen, Bob, the money that came out of the reserves for the small businesses, is that starting to come back in? And I know it's going back into reserves, but are we getting some of that money back now? Or is it too early?
Yeah, again, through you, your worship. Yes, we're starting to see some monies being remitted, not in a significant amount, I believe they have until the end of 2022, in which to remit their dollars, so, but we have started to see some, some action on that, and it's positive. And so we, we, we think we're gonna follow what, what the planned expectation was for the flow of dollars.
Thank you very much for that. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Thank you, councillor Gardner. Okay, no more questions, we'll move on to Mark. Running Economic Development and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And good afternoon, members of council. So yeah, we're lined up to go through the various departments. And I have the managers of each of those respective departments on this, in this meeting today, and we're gonna start with economic development. And Bob has already answered a couple of questions, a couple of items that we were gonna speak to, which is the business park and also the, the loan to various businesses in the community. So the, just looking at some of the data or the numbers in the budget for economic development, the large variations that you see in financial and transfers, as well as in fees and services that are in the 386,000 and then 441,000 are in fact largely related to the loans that have been issued to businesses that are to be repaid, and so that's why it's showing an in and an out in that respect, so it, it looks like a large fluctuation in, in our budget, but it's, it's really just paying out and paying back in, in those accounts. And the only other area that has some variation to it is in the salaries and benefits, which is largely due to the, the Marina Coordinator position has in the, in the winter months. We've, we've put that in as a special events coordinator, which of course we've been looking to have to assist organizations that come in, trying to attract organizations to come in, but also then to help them out. And so this is the beginning, the first time that we have a special events coordinator who is working to help within the tourism office. And so there is money there to, to pay for that. And the balance of the salaries and benefits are really just natural increases, steps in the salaries in the economic development department. I think Bob would like to speak to a few of the details in the budget, and so I'll hand that off to him at this time.
Great, thank you, Merk. Yeah, just to draw council's attention to some key areas that are within each budget and, and the activity areas in, in my division. And, you know, starting with economic development, we've talked about recent land sales in the business park, interest remains, continues to be high in acquiring companies looking to acquire land and, and subsequently develop and put up buildings. And with that in mind, we are shifting focus in 2022 to focus more on even more than we have in the past on resident attraction and supporting local businesses in their workforce development efforts. All in a goal to increase the population and ultimately increase the workforce that's available to our major employers and to our small businesses. And in, in relation to the latter, we're also looking at increasing our efforts to provide ongoing support to the small business sector, to the, those elements of the economy that perhaps have been hardest hit by the pandemic and therefore may need some support moving forward as they, they move into recovery mode. And so a, a large part of the economic development marketing effort centers on the choose cornwall.ca website. And we'll be looking at enhancing and expanding that website and its reach into other markets outside of Cornwall, most notably Eastern Ontario and Western Quebec, including the GTA region. With regards to tourism, like economic development, the majority of the ongoing everyday operations revolve around marketing. And similar to last year, we expect 2022 to be a hybrid year of transitioning from strict pandemic-driven lockdowns to more open economies and welcoming visitors. And much like last year, we'll be really focusing on active tourism cyclists, hikers, those tourists that are coming in a safe manner and likely making day trips or one-night stays. And a lot of the activities being outdoor or certainly in us, in activities that are safe, safe events, as opposed to past years, as Mark may have alluded to, where a lot of our tourism activity was driven by events and major events. And so we're starting to see again, an ongoing pattern of major events being postponed and push forward to later in the year, hoping for, for more lenient health and safety measures. And that also affects marketing, and so a number of tourism-related marketing trade shows, which were planned for the first quarter of this year, have been postponed to the second quarter or postponed to next year. And so that will have an impact on some of our marketing efforts with regards to tourism. I will close off my tourism comments by saying that we welcome back a, a full-year visitor guide this year. And so we're looking to publish that in early February. And in previous years, our, our visitor guide was replaced with a kind of a staycation guide or a seasonal type of guide, and we're looking to, to bring, bring back our, our full season, full year-long visitor guide. And so look for that in, in February. And then with regards to the Business Enterprise Centre, as everybody knows, we have a new consultant leading the charge for entrepreneurship development, and her name is Shawna Bags. She comes with us with a lot of experience in, in SD and G and the townships and in terms of economic development. And we're looking at reinvigorating that center with, again, focusing on the small business sector that's been affected most by COVID, but also responding to an ongoing demand for entrepreneurship assistance from first-time entrepreneurs, people that are looking to start their own businesses. And we, we undertake those activities, obviously, in cooperation with the province, who funds the majority of the Business Enterprise Centre efforts, but also with local partners such as the Chamber of Commerce and the BIAs and community futures and, and other groups. So it, it, it looks forward to be a busy 2022, and I'm happy to answer any questions if, if there are any from council.
Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions, the first one with regard to your tourism outreach and generally speaking, visitor friendliness, I thought that kiosk that you had situated in front of the civic complex last summer was a wonderful idea. And I hope it wasn't just a COVID feature, I hope we'll always maintain that because I thought it was a very well-visited and popular attraction. So I suppose I'm hoping you're gonna say yes, you're gonna continue.
I think that's the, that is the leading plan this year, I, I can't say that we finalized the plans. I think there were advantages when we were co-located in the museum, although it's a very small space and the museum may have different plans. But I think a location in the park
Sorry about that.
Good one. I think what we really noticed was having a more higher-profile location made a difference and having one that was noticeable to, to vehicles was also ma- major difference. So yes, I would agree that we had a very good experience out front of the complex last summer. We're looking to perhaps enhance that by providing more full season, full weather, I should say, services so that we're not at, at the, at the mercy of, of, of the weather gods, so.
So my next question has to do with your statements about resident attraction and workforce development. I'm wondering if we as a city do anything that specifically targets immigration. I know that apparently the word out of Ottawa is that the federal government is actually behind in its objectives to attract a certain number of immigrants. And I'm wondering if we as a city have any, do we have ongoing partnerships? And I'm wondering if we as a city have any, do we have ongoing partnerships with, with groups that can help with this? Or what exactly do we have to entice immigrants to Cornwall?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, the, uh, we used to have, we were part of a regional immigration pilot, which was, um, done as a, a subset of the Ontario Immigration Nominee, nomination program. And that had some, some positive aspects. It certainly raised the profile of Cornwall within newcomers that were already established in Cornwall. There are some still, there are still challenges on that particular file in terms of, um, the OINP, the nomination program for Ontario. And, and what they view to be, uh, in-demand skill sets that may or may not fit well with our major employers. Um, and so, so those are kind of longer-term issues. Uh, the pilot program has ended. I don't believe there's a call to, uh, replace it or to continue it. Um, but I think what they've learned is, uh, an ongoing recognition to support, um, communities outside of the GTA in Ottawa. In, in attracting immigration and immigrants to them. Um, I, what I can tell you is though that we continue to work with, with local partners, the local immigration partnership. But, um, most notably, the Newcomer Employment Welcome Services, TR Leger, in terms of providing support to newcomers that are here. And one of our goals in our marketing plan is to reach, um, people of a working age in Canada, uh, especially those that may be more, uh, able to move locations. And that often is either, either young people or people that, that may have just arrived in Canada and therefore are not tied to a specific location. So, so very much immigration is, remains one of our target. Um, how we try and attract those newcomers to Cornwall remains an open-ended question. And, and we're still, uh, learning and we're still evolving our plans, uh, as we get more information.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilor Towndale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Peters. A question regarding the, uh, under revenue, under fee service charges miscellaneous revenue. Which shows an increase of sixty-two point nine seven percent. Uh, would that line item contain the loan repayments as well? Or is there another explanation for this, uh, sizable increase in that area?
Yeah, good question. And I'll, I'll ask for, um, if I, if I misspeak, I'll ask for Tracy to help me out on that. But the majority of those funds, yes, are related to the emergency small business support loan, as Mr. Ballow mentioned. And, uh, corresponding, uh, increase or, uh, similar increase, uh, in the expenditure side as well. So both expenditures and revenues, those large over-budget amounts relate to that, uh, trip, financial transfers between accounts regarding the loan support program.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, e- exactly. So the fees and services that you see at four, uh, four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred of that. Is related to revenue coming in, the payback of those loans. And under financial and transfers is, uh, the expense of transferring it back to the Brownfields, uh, reserve. The balance is, uh, the city taking in additional deferred revenue for tourism. So there has been some, uh, revenue that was unspent in previous years. And in order to balance that budget, we're using that in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so we'll move on to the Planning, uh, Services Department. And I'll ask, um, Mary Joyce Smith to join me. I do want to point out, uh, that the special studies, uh, that have been accomplished over the years, uh, with funding set aside for that purpose. The Planning Department, as you're, uh, very aware, I'm sure, have been able to accomplish quite a few studies in the last little while. Uh, the official plan in twenty eighteen, the waterfront plan in twenty nineteen. And then, of course, the zoning bylaw from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. And then this year, the archaeological, um, plan, management plan that will be accomplished. Um, so that's, uh, really quite an achievement, uh, for a planning department, um, in a short period of time. Um, as a result, as it says on the bottom of page one forty-three, in financial and transfers, uh, there is no, uh, plan to. Set aside funds within the twenty-two budget, uh, because there, we don't feel that it's, uh, necessary for the, for the foreseeable future. Uh, there will be a time, of course, where we're gonna have to keep replenishing it. Could, uh, be the next year, the, the one after, but, uh, we're gonna take a, a break from setting aside money at this time. Financially, uh, the budget that's been pre- prepared for the planning department, uh, by Mary and her staff, really have very few, uh, changes. Um, and I, before I let Mary speak, I, I want to, uh, let, uh, council know that this will be Mary's last budget. Uh, as she has given her notice for, uh, retirement. So, um, all the work that, uh, I just described, uh, was under her leadership. And I, I want to thank her, uh, there will, of course, be other meetings of planning advisory and so on, but, and, and council. But, uh, uh, she'll be leaving us, uh, in the spring. And so I want to thank her, uh, publicly. And Mary, I'm sure would like to add, uh, some details about the budget.
Thank you, Mark. Um, good afternoon, council and Mr. Mayor. I think what we'll do is we'll simply go through you, the, um, the page that you have in your document. So to begin, um, there was a slight reduction in staff this past year. Uh, Lindsay and I worked quite hard till we found somebody. Anyway, now we have two planners, which I'm very happy about. And, um, so there's a slight, uh, change in the, um, contractual obligations and and benefits. So that three point eight percent is simply, uh, with respect to that. With respect to the purchase of goods, um, there's a minor increase. And that's to accommodate the storage upstairs for the documents. I think I spoke about this last year. Everything got put on hold. Basically, there's a lot of, I think it's the Glenn Storeton Lodge have a lot of, uh, pieces of equipment up there. So once that gets moved out, I think we can move ahead with that. Services and rents, um, this is, as Mark said, um, important and it's reduced because we won't be doing a, a plan this year. Uh, we will be doing the archaeological management plan, but no new plan. So that archaeological management plan that we're working on was budgeted last year. So that's why we don't have a contractual service. One other highlight, um, and I think many other departments probably have this, we have a reduction in, um, the accommodation, meal, travel, training. Everything's virtual for my staff right now. With respect to financial transfers, um, I think Mark mentioned that planning has historically, as long as I can remember, put money aside. And we did not do that this year. So it's less fifty thousand for the planning reserve. So with the completion of all the plans this year, um, we will continue with the AMP. Um, everything else is done. The official plan is good till twenty twenty-eight. You have a new waterfront plan and, uh, zoning bylaw. Um, with respect to revenue, I guess, uh, all I can say is that, uh, it's fairly consistent. Um, we, um, have, it's basically flat line, I think, in terms of that. Um, another thing too, we have a new fees bylaw and that will allow, um, the, um, indexing of the planning fees. And I think that's it because the contribution from reserves, uh, will not be required, as we've mentioned. So that's it.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions? Councilor McIntosh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, do we have any idea how much available serviced land is available to, uh? I mean, I, I'm, where I'm coming from, I was talking to a builder, he estimated that in fifteen years, if building continues at the current pace. There wouldn't be that many available lots to build on in Cornwall. Do we have an inventory or any idea?
Well, if you recall, we did the, um, oh, municipal comprehensive review. And that looked at all of the draft plans that we have. Um, if I'm just trying to find my paper here. And essentially, they, um, took draft plans out. So that being said, when you do another municipal comprehensive review, if more draft plans need to come in, they can easily be added. The, um, to date this year, head it all organized, Tiana can't find it. We actually did put on four subdivisions. So if you recall, there was Baldwin, there was Northwood Forest, we did, uh, Marguerite de Ville. And, um, there was another one, I just can't recall. So there's, there's still lots out there that are draft planned. And what has to happen is they have to move to registered plan. So Northwoods, for example, has eight draft plants. So once the developer decides to put another plan on, that'll move to registration and there'll be more lots. So at this point, there's still available lots out there. They just have to move to registration.
Okay, I think, uh, if, if I can just add to that, uh, Councilor McIntosh. Yeah, the, the report that Mary is, is, uh, referring to, I believe, was to recognize a twenty-year period. And so, everything that's inside our urban settlement boundary should, should be enough to deal with another twenty years. Beyond the urban settlement boundary are largely properties that are rural area. That will in the future become residential properties in the, for the most part. So, um, I think we have a twenty-year period within the urban settlement boundary. And then further to that, outside of the urban settlement boundary and the, you know, Cornwall is a bit of an inverted T. In the top corners, uh, north, so, uh, northeast and northwest, we have a lot of rural area. And those areas would, uh, largely become, especially in the northwest, would be future residential lands that are not in, either zoned or designated in the official plan at this time to allow for residential develop.
Okay, one last question. And, uh, when we introduce development fees, there's some fear that building activity would slide off. In hindsight, in looking back at development fees, has there been any, uh? Indication that it hasn't affected building at all?
I think I'd argue no. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd argue no, because we expected that. We thought there might be some kind of a, a slowdown. But in terms of committee of adjustment, I can tell you, we exceeded our budget target. Um, uh, is planning applications, uh, subdivisions, like I mentioned. I, I've gone years here where we haven't done a subdivision. So to do three or four this year is, that's, that's a lot. So, um, you know, I would argue no.
Yeah, and I, I think the, the data that Charles, uh, Bray just showed in our most recent council report shows, uh, probably healthier development activity than we've seen in a long time. And that was, uh, in twenty-one, which of course was a COVID year. So we're expecting, and when we get to the building permits side, you'll see the projection of development, uh, is, is more ambitious than what we saw this year and last year.
Yeah, uh, I talked to a, a builder who built here and he built in Ottawa and other places. And he said, uh, it doesn't affect him at all because in Ottawa, he's paid thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for development fees and a lot. So here it's really not, he called it peanuts.
Well, yeah, we're, they're at, uh, you know, in the forty thousand dollar range, we're approaching five thousand.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, Mark.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna move on to, uh, building services. And, uh, so, uh, Charles Bray, our chief building official is, is going to be, has joined me. Um, I'm not sure, Charles, if, uh, Bernadine would also be joining us when we get into bylaw. But, uh, I know that she's also, uh, in this meeting. Uh, with respect to building services, I just want to point out that, um, as you would have seen in the bylaw, uh, at our last council meeting. The, uh, city has, uh, hired a new, uh, deputy chief building official. His name is Chris Roloffs. And he'll be, uh, starting on January thirty-first, so that's, uh, next week. Uh, he brings experience to the, uh, department. Um, we have a relatively young and new staff in the building department. And so, uh, we really appreciate the experience that, uh, Mr. Roloffs is, uh, adding to the department. I also want to point out that, um, some good work has been done by the building department, uh, with a consultant to, uh, to change the building permits to be, uh, more appropriate. And as a result, that has allowed us to, uh, and that and a strong economy allow us to increase, uh, the estimated revenue by about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, for this budget year versus the last year. So those are all the details I want to, uh, outline. And, uh, Charles may e- either want to add to that, or we're also here to answer any questions you may have.
Charles.
Uh, good afternoon, council and Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so in a, I, as Mark mentioned, we do have Christopher Roloff that's starting, uh, on Monday. So, uh, we are very happy to have him join our, uh, our team and to help out our, our younger, um, our younger staff as far as experience. Uh, and that's one of the items that, uh, is not a significant amount in the budget. But we do have to, uh, contribute for a little bit more training for, uh, and professional development for our, our staff. And that'll also be reflected in bylaw, uh, services when we get to that point as well. Um, the only other item, uh, that I may have mentioned in the, in the budget, uh, in addition to the revenue that, uh, Mr. Bolo mentioned. Was the, the increase in services and rent. Um, so we do have, uh, some money set aside, uh, especially for that. In the sense that, uh, if we do need, um, some exterior consultation services for some of other projects that come in. Uh, we may have to, uh, rely on that. Our previous, uh, consultant that used to do that for the city, uh, has retired. Um, and in fact, uh, there's a significant amount of retirement in our industry. And that sort of explains the, uh, the, uh, the turnover that we've been having in, in our, our department as well. Um, that's a sort of a high-level, uh, resume of our, uh, billing services. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilor Gardner. Yeah, I, I'm not sure if Mark wants to answer this or Charles. You, you know that, uh, I suggest to IT that if they're overwhelmed, that they look at hiring people. I'm gonna ask you if you are both comfortable with the staff that you have now. And if you need more, as I said to you earlier this year, ask for it. And I'll do my best to, to help to get you more staff if you need it. So what's the answer? Are you comfortable with what you have now? And especially with the new employee that you've just brought in, Mr. Roloff?
Mark, um, maybe I can give an answer from, uh, my general manager's, uh, perspective. And Charles can give a little bit, uh, more detailed from his end. Um, I think if we get our full staff complement, uh, in place and if we start seeing that, uh, that they, they are getting the experience that they need. Uh, I think, you know, as Charles points out, uh, hiring someone with, in this case, eleven years of experience. Specifically on the commercial side, uh, that is usually where there are deficiencies in terms of training with new people. Uh, because the commercial stuff and the industrial stuff tends to be a little bit more complex. And so that's what Mr. Roloff brings, uh, to this department largely, uh, in addition to what, uh, Mr. Bray has. And, uh, and so I think it's very helpful. To answer your question, I think, uh, what we hope to do is to work with the team that we have. And if we feel that, uh, there needs to be additional help, um, we would ask council for that. Mr. Bray has also, uh, put in, in place a bit of money, uh, forty thousand dollars, I believe, for consulting assistance, uh, where necessary. So, uh, I, we think we're, we're gonna be comfortable with, with what we have. But I'll ask Mr. Bray for his comments as well.
And to your comments, uh, Mark, excuse me, uh, Charles, um, please don't delay if you're in a situation. And to your comments, uh Mark, excuse me, uh Charles, um please don't delay if you're in a situation where you, your people are overwhelmed. Please come back to, to council and ask for what you need. Charles, go ahead.
Yes, uh through you, Mr. Mayor. Um so in addition to what Mr. Ballow uh mentioned, I, I, all I can add is that. We, we've had difficulty in recruiting for the past, uh I'd say about a year and a half to two years. In fact, we currently have a vacancy right now. Um this is not unusual in our sector and I believe s- other sectors as well, but um I can speak on our sector. Uh we do presently uh have a vacancy. Uh I was just informed by uh HR today that the, the posting has been put out. So we are actively looking to recruit another billing official. Um fingers crossed, it is not easy right now. Um. About uh, I think it was about three years ago, our associations uh told us that uh we could expect uh about a. Forty-five to fifty-five percent retirement rate of the about four thousand billing officials in the province. And we're in that right now and uh the job posting boards are completely full and uh. We're a, a little far away from uh the GTA area, so it is sometimes a little difficult to attract some, some individuals, but uh. Nonetheless, we are uh gonna be pursuing uh that recruitment process and um. We, we have been very fortunate to have Mr. Roloff uh joining us as uh, as Mark mentioned, a very experienced billing official, so we're uh. We will have to continue uh that way for now and uh we, we understand your, your comments, Mr. Gardner, and we'll uh, we'll definitely reevaluate it as we go along.
Thank you very much for the, the answer. Uh Mayor Grant, thank you for.
Uh any other questions? Moving on, Mark.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a bit of a segue uh into the bylaw section because. As it turns out, we had two individuals who went from bylaw into the building permits department. And so it created uh. It, that and a couple of other matters created uh some vacancies in that department and so. Uh we have a relatively young staff in that office as well. There is some experience, but uh there are also. Some new recruits and uh looking to hire there as well. So Bernadine is uh, is busy with that. Um there's also the parking program that many of uh the councillors. Uh would, would be aware of or, or all of council would be aware of some of the changes that we made uh as a parking working group. Uh so that uh I think will help to uh make things more efficient uh for that program. And then finally, the only other thing I would say is that uh council would be aware that. We and the fire department expect to be uh doing a little bit more enforcement on property standards. Uh going forward. And so of course, that uh will require a fair amount of work uh from our bylaw officers. In addition to the other, you know, general bylaw, parking, et cetera, so. All, as you know, all of our parking, or uh sorry, all of our bylaw officers deal with all bylaws. And so uh there's a lot of work there for them. I think to answer the question of councillor Gardner, you know, do we have enough? Uh we will have one additional person this year uh to help with us. And uh we'll measure that uh as we go along, but uh we're hoping that the compliment we have going forward. Once we've recruited everybody, uh will be adequate. And so either Mr. Bray or uh or Ms. McAvoy Robertson could add uh comments if they wish. And then we'll take questions.
Thanks, Mark. Tell who's. Bernadine, welcome.
Hi, hi everyone. Um. Everything Mark said um is true. Uh we have a complement of six officers right now. Um we'll be going into this year with a comple- a full complement um in the midst of hiring two new officers. Um I'm, I'm looking forward to dealing with the cases with six officers to see how. Um how that's going to go. And I think next year at this time, we'll be able to answer better on if, uh if the compliment that we have is enough.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor McIntosh.
The uh, I assume the uh bylaw department does not work weekends or after six o'clock at night?
So uh with the changes that we've implemented in the bylaw uh department within the past two and a half to three years. We now have enforcement till seven PM in the evening in the summer. Six PM in the evening in the winter, as well as coverage every Saturday from eight thirty to four thirty.
Okay, I guess what I'm leading up to is if there's a bylaw complaint. On uh after seven PM or six PM or uh on a Saturday evening. Do the police handle bylaw complaints?
Yes, they do. Um and depending on the safety, depending on their workload. If it could be a noise complaint, they might say contact bylaw on Monday morning, but if it's a dog bite. Or um if something of safety issue, they will deal with it immediately.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Moving on, Mark.
Thank you, uh Mr. Mayor. And so we'll move on to uh recreation and facilities and so I would ask uh Jamie Fathrup. Thank you, Jamie. To join um. I think uh the description that is given on page one forty-nine really uh. Outlines for us uh some of the changes in recreation. You know, the hiring of a new arts uh and culture coordinator is, is new for this year. And of course, as uh described there, will only um be implemented for the last quarter of the year. Um I think Jamie can speak to some of the details of the uh, of the financial. Uh including some of that are described a little bit uh with respect to fuel and uh some of the other items. There's an increase uh resulting from um the Alstville Theater uh lease with St. Lawrence College. And I think uh Jamie will go on to speak a bit more about some of the summary of activities um on page one fifty. Uh perhaps with other details, but I'll hand this off to Jamie.
Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, uh members of council. Um so y- yes, as, as Mark mentioned. Um for salaries and benefits, we've got the new position uh for the arts and culture coordinator position. Um but we've also, there's been a, a adjustment. We, we've shifted a staff position from recreation services to uh. Uh facilities. Um so you'll see it, we'll see a corresponding increase in the facility side. Um so on page one fifty, um under expenditures and salaries and benefits, we're only showing a twenty-four thousand dollar. Increase for salaries and benefits. The reason why that is, is um the value that it is, is because of that, that. The, the shifting of that position to facilities. Um for our purchased goods is up by about thirteen thousand dollars. And that is largely due to increase in fuel costs uh for the marina, uh which is a good thing. Because we're buying more fuel, because we're, we were selling more fuel. We, we had a quite good season at the marina this past year. Um and exceeded our revenue expectations for uh fuel sales as well as dockage. Um services and rents, we're seeing an increase uh largely related to our ticketing system and those, those services. Um financial transfers, um as Mark mentioned, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for Alstville Theater. Um we've also got increased uh minor sports subsidies. Then there is also a decrease uh related to an eighty thousand dollar uh client fees. And that client fees is, is an in and out for, um so it, it results in no net increase. That was sort of, it's a expenditures we previously would um have to cover for uh. Uh our tenant at the civic complex, but then we recover those costs uh from that same tenant. So uh that uh, that overall increase in financials and transfers is, is ninety-four thousand dollars. Um as Mark mentioned, the bottom half of page one fifty, the, these fluctuations are also summarized by our, our various business activities. So uh I'll just touch on some of the, the items where the, the changes might seem a little more significant. Um particularly uh recreation and men, we're showing a thirty-three thousand dollar increase. Um that is largely related to um, some may have seen over the past year or two. Um w- we've been using porta potties um at some of our outdoor uh recreation facilities. Um during the pandemic with our, our public buildings closed. Um it became quite apparent, the, the public need to access public uh washrooms. And so as a way to do that without opening our buildings up to the public, we've been using uh porta potties at various locations. That are, are, are popular locations for recreation services. Um and they, they've been very well received um amongst the public and so we're, we're proposing to continue that uh going forward. Um another sizable increase, you'll see under the leisure arts line item. Um an increase of two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Um that is related to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to Alstville Theater. Um as well uh related to an increase in our, our waterfront capital funding. Uh further down is Marina. You'll see that um we've got a sixty-two thousand dollar. Um uh reduction uh versus, pardon me, we're doing sixty-two thousand dollars better on our Marina operation. And that is due to our, our fuel sales and our, our, our seasonal and transient dockage at the Marina. And then lastly is the art center and that's the twenty-one thousand dollar six hundred um increase for uh the arts and. Uh culture coordinator position. I'd be happy to answer any questions um related to the, our, our operation here uh before we move on to the capital project for recreation services.
Okay, uh councillor Gardner, then councillor uh Hollingsworth.
Uh have a little bit of patience with me, Mr. Grant. Uh uh one of the issues that's missing here. Um the curling club uh prior to COVID. Uh sent a letter to recreation, which you're aware of, Jamie, I, I know. Uh whereas they wanted two extra uh handicap parking, two or three spaces. And this is mainly for seniors curlers and to me, this is a senior friendly thing. Uh some of them have slipped and fell on ice or, or can't go from the parking lot to the curling center. And have requested, the curling center had requested two or three extra spaces. Um just uh as an example, a lot of these curlers are in their seventies and eighty years old. And anyone on, online right now who thinks that they're sliding out with the rocks, it's not. They use uh queues. So what happens is it allows them to socialize with their peers and it gets them out of their house. Um so I just want to know now, where are we with that? I know you've been in, in contact with. I believe it's Gil Vio, who's now the president, and I'd just like to know. If uh, if it's a possible ability of us doing that. And the last amount that I heard that it would cost to do that was forty-five thousand dollars. So I'm just wondering if there's any movement on that.
Uh yes, uh through you, Mr. Mayor. Um I have been in contact with the president of the curling club. And we have identified um an opportunity to create two existing uh, two parking stalls. Um on the existing lane on the south side of the building. Um without having to build new asphalt or expand the parking area. So um I know, I, I believe the president had mentioned the. They might u- use those for, I, I believe there are a couple of staff. It within the building that he was, they were considering it, uh some safety concerns due to. Staff leaving the building late at night after hours alone, that they, they may seek to make those uh dedicated staff parking. Um but then we also, there is a, as we get to our uh facility section. You'll see there is a capital project which um administrations remove from budget. And that is to uh repave the east parking lot at the civic complex. And so uh I did advise the president that should we, should there be a desire to expand the parking lot? That would be a great time to do it while we've got a uh civil excavation contractor on site. Um where we, so that we could uh, if, if those two parking spots that are created now aren't enough. That there will be an opportunity and we, we hope to propose that in the very near future. Um not twenty twenty-two, but hopefully twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Jamie. I, I put my other hat on, on the senior friendly committee and. It's so important for the seniors that are curling to be able to get in there and socialize with their peers. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
Uh thank you, your worship. A couple of questions. Uh Jamie, on page one fifty. Uh that twenty thousand dollars for the art center. Um I'm assuming that's like about one quarter of the full salary. Is that? Based on, I mean, I realize you're ballparking a bit, but is that about right?
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, that would be salaries and benefits as well. But it would be right for, for one quarter of the year.
Okay, thank you. Uh the second question, and maybe it was drawn up in a report somewhere. I don't recall, so forgive me if I'm asking a question that's already been answered, but. Do we have an idea how much that art facility is going to cost to operate? Do we have a, a number that's relatively firm?
Um through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I can't recall the last, uh there was a um. A draft uh operating budget presented uh to council, I believe, last, some uh earlier in twenty twenty-one. I can't recall the exact number. I believe it was in the order of around two hundred thousand, but again, I'd have to. I, I'd have to pull the report to get the, the exact figure.
That being, that being said, that two hundred thousand is not in this budget, correct?
Through you, Miss Mayor, correct. The, the only uh funds that are, have been budgeted for twenty twenty-two. For the art center is this, the uh twenty-one thousand six hundred shown on that, the last line item on page one fifty.
Good. Now the last thing that uh, if you would, your worship, with your indulgence. Uh I've talked to people who are building like houses and construction guys that I know. And they tell me the cost of building is going up considerably due to the, our rise in goods and products and everything else. So can we anticipate that, let's try and get a handle on this. Can we anticipate the cost of this arts facility is going to be up a significant amount as well? Based on what we're seeing currently?
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, i- i- it's, it's, it's possible. Um we have had um. Our consultants uh have employed a, a financial subconsultant that have uh produced construction estimates. Um and, but I, I will say that they all, the estimates do come with the caveat that. Um COVID has created some volatility in the um construction industry. And so that, that, you know, the, their, their calculations are, are based on sort of normal uh trends. And that i- it, it's very difficult to predict um what effects COVID will have on this pricing, but we, we have heard. Some similar comments that the, they are seeing some higher prices.
And what are those, an approximate estimate right now based on? What they're saying, how much?
The last estimate presented to council was, again, I, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was uh, I think it was around seven point two or three million.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
If I, if I can, Mr. Mayor. Uh just uh to make a comment, general comment on that. I think that is, you know, councillor Hollingsworth. Uh makes a good point that the prices are likely going to be up from what we're accustomed to from pre-COVID. But of course, that affects every project that we uh have going forward. Uh whether we're talking about the municipal works yard or the social housing project or any of the projects that we're talking about. I think we've come to realize that the price of those projects is likely to be higher than, than pre-COVID uh. Estimates.
Uh councillor McIntosh and then councillor McDonald.
Yeah, regarding the uh hiring of the coordinator in October, um I. We, we, do we know when this building is gonna open for sure? Probably late this year, best.
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, uh the rate now, we're looking to go to tender uh by the end of the week. And the currently our, our completion date in that tender document is specified for um, it'll be the summer. For it'll be the summer of twenty twenty three. So the the idea would be to have somebody in place for. That seven or eight months or beforehand, getting the the planning for that programming so that when the facility doors do open. It it's, you know, that that there are events scheduled and then it it's ready to take off and operate. Many of the events such as theaters, shows and that, planning for those happens in excess of six months in advance of the of show dates.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, but. For, you know, I mean, we'll be, I can't see much difference between hiring somebody in late January. To do the same thing, Montreal Canadians hired our general manager on Tuesday, and he started the job on Wednesday. I know that's comparing, that's a bad comparison, which is, but when they opened City Complex, Jack Jordan, the first manager they had. He was hired, I think, about eight weeks before they opened. And I've just seen this via, I mean, I don't know what a person's going to do from October to the day they open. I I just find it really a huge jump on the opening of the facility to have somebody in place that soon. But, you know, what do I know about running a theater?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the only comment I think I'd add would be. If it weren't budgeted to to allow for sometime in twenty twenty one to allow that recruitment to start. Typically, if it were budgeted for twenty twenty three, we would wait for budget approval to begin that recruitment, and then the recruitment process itself. Takes about six to eight weeks, which likely puts us into having somebody in that position not till. End of March, maybe April, which is, which gets a little bit close to the 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 opening date.
Okay, I'm trying to follow this, so we couldn't, it's not a good idea to advertise this in November. And hire somebody in January. Okay, I'm just having trouble following that because, you know, corporations do this all the time, hire people and they they start within two or three weeks of. I just find it, it's a real, to have somebody in place in October. Working on a project that's going to open the next October, perhaps. You know, we're not talking about the Ontario Royal Museum here, it's a, it's a huge facility. I just, I just find that strange, I look at that and I go, why couldn't we wait until January? Advertise in October, hire in January, but anyway. Twenty thousand.
Mark, what are then, Madam CEO?
Yeah, just to perhaps add a little bit of comment. Two things, first of all, we're not going to hire someone until we believe it's. It's the right time to hire the person, so, for example, if the construction is somewhat delayed, of course, we're not going to go ahead. And hire the person prematurely, so we'll easily, you know, what we're asking for is the budget to allow for. In in the event that things go as we hope they do. I do also want to say that as an analogy to this, I believe. When the Benson Center was built, we expected that we had some administrative. Assistance with that, so it wasn't like we built the Benson Center and then all of a sudden we introduced. Some manpower to that, we had manpower through the entire project who were helping with that project. I, so I I do, I do agree with what Jamie is saying, and that is that. I think there's a learning curve there, and there's a, there is a lot of programming that needs to go into it.
Okay, I, Mark, what you say about maybe not hiring, if it's in the budget, you don't have to, might not have to use. Is that what you're telling me? Realize that construction isn't going to happen when we think it's going to happen. I can, I can accept that.
Maureen, did you?
I think just to elaborate on Mark and Jamie's comments. We can't not get a commitment from council to be able to recruit for this position. Before the end of of this year, because what will end up happening is when we start to get into budget planning for twenty twenty three. We're not going to be able to recruit for the position going through a budget process, your Art Center is going to be, the timing of it is going to be critical, so. We will monitor the appropriate time to recruit the individual, we have put a. Small amount in the budget for it in the latter part of this year in case we think that we should be able to recruit sooner than later. But the reality is, is that the timing is somewhere towards the end of the year or early in twenty twenty three. We need to get an individual on board for the Art Center.
Okay, that's fair.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I want to say that as every year, the budget book is a great read. Congratulations to Tracy, but congratulations to you too, Jamie, because I think you've got the most exciting chapter in the whole budget book, and it's a big book. Almost every page, I I mean, it's in your department really that people meet the city. And all the experiences you have planned through, all the programs are such. Positive and upbeat events in people's lives, so good work. Now, I do have a question though, and it has to do with, there seems to be an awful hike in the. Cost needed to run the leisure arts programs. And I'm I'm assuming that the shows that we have ongoing in Lamru Park in the summer are part of this. And and they're one of the many, many great entertainment features that the city runs. So no objection here, but I'm just curious to know why there's such a big jump in in funding needed there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that that jump is solely related to the additional funding to Oldsville Theater, which is. Hundred and fifty thousand, and then it is also. Related to the the other increases related to the waterfront capital, which which, once we get through these questions, we'll we'll speak to.
Okay, thank you very much, it's it's all good because it brings so much pleasure and heightens the quality of life of everybody in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for being late, I had some technical difficulties with with the equipment, but anyway. I'm pleased to see Jamie here, he's a, he's always a great man to give answers to the specific questions I have. Would it be your intention to hire this person as quickly as you can, once all approvals are met? And have them visit all the corresponding facilities. Around Eastern Ontario to develop some kind of relationship with them, to seek their advice. Their suggestions on on sharing artists and programs, some of the things you're going to do.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what we would like to see. A lot of the acts that we would like to see take place at this Art Center. Would also frequent the these similar venues throughout Eastern Ontario and Southern Ontario. I know we we took a a group of committee members involved in the Art Center planning to look at similar facilities. So whether that might be even a visit or just networking to make those contacts. So that that touring group that's might make a stop in Kingston. If we know that they're making a stop in Kingston and making a stop in Montreal, that they they consider making a stop in Cornwall as they pass along the four one.
Because I think you'll find that people who operate those kind of facilities are more than willing to talk with you and share secrets that they have. Because if you are successful, it means they are also successful, and you share information on. What works and what doesn't work, and I think I have the names of quite a few of them, if you want, I can pass them on to you for a small charge, but. But I think it's, there's some really talented people in the Ottawa and Kingston and those places, and they'd be more than willing, I know. To help and be excited about the facility we're going to have.
That, that'd be great, I'd appreciate those contacts.
And the Brigadoons?
They're going to be in that price range then, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Counselor Towndale and Counselor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mathru, you, thank you, Jamie, question regarding the Marina. Seems to be doing well on the profit side, it's, this might be kind of a difficult question to answer, but. Are are we putting in less money annually now that we've taken it back over than we were paying for? When we had a private operator running it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the money, it's a little, it's a little bit difficult to answer. Because the money that's spent at the Marina isn't necessarily on the facility itself and the property. Is not necessarily consistent year to year, so you'll you'll see. And or under facilities and capital, you know, there's some capital expenditures there. So I I think in recent years, actually, we've spent, we've managed to spend more money. At the Marina, but I I think the Marina has, it's it's original construction date is in the eighties. And so it's really reached a point of its of its life where it it's, there's a, it's time for capital renewal. And so, you know, the the fuel tanks was a was a recent improvement. And then we're also budgeting to do some dock improvements this year, and then some erosion protection improvements as well. So the it is a facility that is going to require some continued investment. For the next few years to address some of the aging infrastructure, but I think once we get through this sort of wave. It is going to, that those expenditures again will subside for a while, it it tends to come in in a cycle.
Okay, yeah, that 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 makes sense to me, thank you.
And for Ebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had originally put my hand up when the Art and Culture Coordinator debate started. So I might be beating a dead horse here to justify this twenty one thousand dollars, but. I I also, I was under the impression, and and maybe this, you can clarify this, was that. The Art Center would be a public place which would offer workshops and activities to youth. Young adults of all ages, residents of all ages. And so there's, you know, there's facilitators that need to be found and workshop materials that need to be created and. Registration that needs to take place, I I believe, I believe this is what the intention is, right, and so that's not something that happens. You know, we opened July first, and then it takes us three months to put that together, that takes several months and in putting together, so maybe you can clarify that.
Through you, Miss Mayor, absolutely, you're being on accurate. Quite often, a lot of the programs to be offered to, you know, we don't necessarily have the in-house expertise to. Teach painting classes or improv classes, so a lot of it is trying to go and recruit instructors, find instructors. To and and put these programs together in advance of being able to put them out to the public for registration. So that that's exactly the 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 type of planning that we're expecting this individual to do prior to the doors opening.
So it's not just booking the venue for concerts here and there, there's actual programming that needs to be created, not just booking and whatnot, so. This takes quite a bit of time, we want to do it right, so I certainly support bringing somebody on as as soon as possible, and then I don't see a problem. Within those eight months while they're here without a facility to be supporting other departments and other projects that are art related, like I'm seeing. In in your budget, right, so I'm sure that that individual can be pulled in different directions in the meantime.
Through you, Miss Mayor, absolutely, and I I think the other is policies. You know, some of our facilities like the Benson Center has a number of policies that are, take quite a bit of thought. And we need to, some outreach as well to the user groups to make sure that these policies will will work. Appropriately and allow different users of the facility to share the facility in a fair and equitable fashion.
Counselor Gardner.
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jamie, I know we're talking about the painting. Performing arts, et cetera, et cetera, but I I hope that we're not forgetting small conferences in that black box theater. We need to set it up so that it's not only for the arts, but when that black box isn't busy. That we should be recruiting small conferences and and meetings as as they did at Oldsville Theater.
Through you, Miss Mayor, no, you you are exactly right, Counselor Gardner, there is a. A a need in the community for for meeting room spaces, convention spaces, wedding. Any kind of special, any sort of special events, so that will be all part of the business activity at that facility.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Jamie, I just want to mention a couple voters that friends of mine that vote down there, the. Positive comments about the Marina were were well received, they've. They said the experience this year was different than any other year, and they fully enjoyed it and and a lot of transience, so. I think it's working and it's working in the right direction.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate that, and it it has been a very busy year, and in fact. We were, the facility's operating at capacity for much of the summer.
Thank you.
Shall we move on to the the capital project?
Yep, sure. Jamie, were you going to speak on page one fifty two?
That would be our, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe I'll just start with. A general commentary, so this is our waterfront plan. Projects, and I just wanted to mention, I I think council is obviously fully aware that we have a new waterfront committee. Or waterfront working group, I should say, that is made up of the mayor and councillors Towndale and Bennett. And then on the staff side would include myself, Mary and Jamie, and assisted by Katie Wells. I'll let Jamie speak to the details of these five projects that are identified on page one fifty two. But I, but I want to mention that. The priority of these projects is yet to be reviewed by our working group. And so to me, there are two important things, one is, are all of these projects. The most important for us in twenty twenty two. And that can be debated and will be debated by the working group. But I also want to point out that. I would ask that the that council maintain the financial contribution. That is identified in this project, because if you look at one page, page one fifty three, which is the following page. You'll see that this is really the last time that we devote. The the relatively small amount of money that we're talking about, which is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Of course, growing in the subsequent years to nine hundred and ninety and seven ninety, and then. You know, in the in the years of twenty seven, twenty eight, an investment of two point one million, two point two million, so. Certainly, I I think we, as a community, we want to see a. A fairly steady investment in our waterfront. And so those are, as I said, those five projects that are identified, I think are important. They were put there by, you know, including input from the public. And so I'll let Jamie outline them, and if there are any questions about them. As I said, the the working group still needs to look at these in detail to see where they sit in priority. So Jamie, if you want to just describe the projects and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mark, so the the first project listed in in the sheet is the Gano Park Boat Launch Enhancements Design. The boat launch at Gano Park is quite well used, but it it does have some functional issues. In that it's also a bit of a quasi cobble beach, it's it's. An area that's it's popular with residents to use to access the water and swim. However, the way the traffic flow of trucks and trailers as they launch their boats. It it, there's a safety issue in which people accessing the water and these vehicles are. Are 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 crossing each other in the same space. So what we would like to see is a redesign of that space and provide something a little bit better. Maybe a little more similar to the parking, trailer parking that's over in Lamru Park. And then the the next component of this is also associated with that, and that's the Gano Park Beach Design Improvements. It's a sixty thousand dollar item, and so what I I foresee is that. We would seek to retain a consultant that would design, do one exercise, design both items. As as one interacts with the other. The third item in this project is a bike share strategy, as Mark mentioned, recommended in the. Waterfront Master Plan. Waterfront Master Plan. Um, it it's to look at uh to the local opportunities um for bike rentals um and bike share programs. Um, we do have a bicycle rental program that has been offered in the past season um out of Marina Two Hundred. Um, that's been fairly successful, but it is a fairly small scale. So this would seek to potentially look to grow that. Um, but also consider uh bike share programs. Um, another, the next item is a public art strategy. Um, and this is something that the master plan recommends, but it's also been uh called on by from residents within the arts community. Um, for the need for a a a a public art uh policy and strategy. Um, the last item is an off-leash dog park study. Um, recommended in the waterfront uh plan, but as well, uh it is mentioned in the recreation master plan as. An identified need in our community. Um, the, I think a a primary um uh focus of this study. Would be a site selection exercise um that would also include a a public consultation component. There's a some polarizing views as to where a uh off-leash uh dog park should be located. Some feel strongly it should be on the waterfront, others feel no the watershed for it. It should be elsewhere. So I I think. Um, the it's proposed to do an exercise to develop a a location and some preliminary. Um, concepts for an off-leash dog park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. Council McIntosh.
Hi, Jamie. The uh the boat launch uh that was installed last year, was it? Uh, really, really improved the uh capabilities of launching a boat at Gando Park. And I've noticed a huge increase, the number of voters using that launch. As I said, I think I said this before, I one Sunday afternoon, I counted thirty four trailers parked along the side. In fact, I had to park way over by the uh washrooms. Uh. Looking at the beach idea, not a bad idea, but uh that whole is that whole area would have to be redone as you. Explain because right now people, what would be the beach area, people, there's now a roadway. So you'd have to definitely. In um invade some of that green space in the center, that if not all of it to for parking. Um, but it's a great idea, I think. Uh, there could be challenges with the drop off there. There's quite a, you know, where you want the beach, there's quite a bit of a drop off. Somebody was renting kayaks. In that area this summer, I think he was from Ottawa. Any idea how he made out?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, they they didn't share their financials with us. However, they they did share that. They did better than they anticipated in their first year. Um, with it, so it was it was great to see uh that service offered and. In fact, the the same operators were looking to expand their operation into the winter months in Gando Park. With offering uh snowshoe rentals and fat bike rentals. Um, and unfortunately, uh they are still waiting for their shipment of supplies to arrive. Um, and so I we're we're still hopeful that that that'll they'll be able to operate for a portion of the sea, the winter season. But they do hope to return again to Gando Park and and build on uh build their business on uh from what they accomplished this this past summer.
Yeah, he had he had something I'd never seen before, kayaks with a transparent bottom. Kayaking look at the bottom. I've never seen those before. Been a kayaker for a while. Um, the off-leash dog park, we have one. Hydro Park and uh. Uh, every day you go up there, there's at least ten people with their dogs running. It seems like a almost like a club. Would that be an area that would be considered? Uh, approaching Hydro and making it official?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that that is a potential option. Um, the land ownership is is an issue that would have to be sorted out with Hydro. Um, I will say it it we are aware of the activity and it is quite popular. Um, there are some issues with it, though, in that it it's not a fenced in area. Um, and so there 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 can be uh periodically conflicts. The the rec uh path happens to travel right through it. And and people do um take their dogs, let their dogs off leash there. And so that there can be issues. Where with a municipally owned or operated off-leash dog park would be fenced in and. Typically, the way they're designed is that there's sort of two areas. They they one area is for for a smaller uh scale sized dog. Where then you've got another area for larger dogs. Um, and and so by separating the two, it helps helps eliminate some of the potential for conflict.
I'm just surprised that Hydro tolerates it, you know, because it's some liability there. But I noticed I was up there the other day for a walk and they've now put in gates and they close now at eight o'clock at night. They don't allow anybody to park there. Uh, and it's the only place you could really park and let a dog loose. So uh they've obviously imposed some restrictions too, but I am surprised that they. Almost say, okay, it's fine for the dogs, so just pick up after and fun.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we we have had conversations uh with Hydro about the property and the activity and they are. Willing to allow it to to uh occur. Um, however, you know, there is, I think, some reservation or on their on their side. Um, but um as I mentioned before about, I think I mentioned about the porta potties, that was one location where we had a porta potty placed. Because of of the uh the the just the recreation traffic that we we see there.
Yeah, wasn't our friend who called us in? You know, the person always calls, I pass it on to you.
Just a comment on that uh. The last group that uh the that looked for the dog park, uh they looked at that area and they didn't want it. So. So that's uh. Anyway, Council Gardener.
Yeah, um, on that on that comment, Mr. Grant, actually, Jamie. Uh, I play golf in Morrisburg often and their dog park is so perfect. And it is on the waterfront, except it's across the the road. And if we could have the same thing as they do in Morrisburg, it's well used. And it's a large dog, small dog, different parks. So, yeah, that would be a, I would, I would really.
Any other questions? Well, uh, the waterfront working group uh chaired by uh Council Towndale will be looking at all these uh items and. Bringing back a report to council in the uh in two thousand twenty two. So anyway, thank you. Next, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we would then be moving on to city facilities and I'll ask. Jamie to go over some of the details, both with respect to budget. And when it comes uh time to looking at the capital projects. I think what Jamie is going to do is uh where they're fairly straightforward and self-described. Uh, if you have any questions and perhaps for the more complex. Um, he would give a bit of detail and then take questions as well.
Thank you, Mark. Um, so for city facilities on on page one fifty five and one sixty six or fifty six of the budget book. Um, I I'll just touch on the the uh the items where there's some uh significant variance. Uh, so you'll see under salaries and benefits, we're showing an increase three hundred and uh two thousand dollars. Um, as mentioned in the uh under Recreation Services, we had transferred a position from Recreation Services. To um city facilities. So that that increase is partially explained uh there as well. Um, there's been some a wage adjustment to some of our tradespeople and our sub four persons. Uh, within the organization that's uh explains part of the increase. Um, as well as our our typical uh incremental increases. Under purchase of goods, there's a decrease uh of forty five thousand dollars. Uh, this is largely related to uh electricity savings, electricity savings that are a result of uh previous. Uh, LED lighting uh replacement projects that have taken place. At the Aquatic Center, the Civic Complex and the Benson Center. So they those projects are are um delivering uh the energy savings that was promised. Um, as well, uh, there is a, we do have some planned uh new equipment uh under purchase of goods. And one of the more significant purchases is um outdoor pool heater at for one of our outdoor pools. Um, uh, we have five outdoor pools and none are heated. Um, and that was in our rec master plan identified as a um. A deterrent for some of the users. And so we are looking to look at installing a a pool heater at one of those outdoor pools as as a trial. As well, we're looking to purchase um some new ball diamond uh grooming equipment, a florist floor scrubber and a safety ladder. Under our services and rents, uh we are showing an eighty three thousand dollar increase. Um, which is largely related to uh increasing in contracted services. Uh, as well as uh plumbing and heating services, which both of those have been uh increased to reflect our three-year uh average actual expenditures. Um, under our financial uh long-term debt principal and interest, we're seeing an increase as well. It we are, the the that's, those are increased costs resulting from a past capital project uh to. Improve the ventilation system at the aquatic center that was completed last year. So those are the uh debt charges that we are budgeting for this year. Um, under financial and transfers, we're seeing an increase sixty eight thousand dollars. And again, these are. Um, related to repayments to a working reserves for the purchase or the acquisition of CN lands adjacent to the Benson Center. Um, which just closed uh at the beginning of the week on Monday. So we are now the owners of the spur line um between the Benson Center. Uh, and the former ICI property, as well as between Big Ben and uh the Brookdale, Brookdale Mall. Uh, last, lastly, there is a net increase in revenue of fifty nine thousand. Um, this is uh largely re- related to um to the uh a hundred and two thousand dollars of gas tax funding. That's uh uh being used to uh. Uh, cover debt charges for uh past projects. Um, and it's it's somewhat offset by a lost revenue or a reduction in revenue from the progress fund interest. So I'd be happy to answer any questions uh and councillors may have on the operating budget.
Any questions? And uh, Mark, as I said, all the capital projects, uh they're pretty self-expl- explicit as. They explain themselves. So I I don't really, unless there's questions from council. I don't see a lot of uh need for detail here, but uh I'm uh waiting. From questions from council, uh Council Towndale.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, uh through you. Thank you, Jamie, on this. Uh, just one comment regarding uh capital projects in particular at Optimist. Park, uh Terry Mear from the Optimist Club actually called me uh earlier in the week and he mentioned that the Optimist Club is looking to. Potentially contribute some funds in celebration of their seventy fifth anniversary. I told him to contact you. I don't know if you've heard from him yet. But uh, that's something they're looking to do. So I'm hoping that the two of you can connect to the to discuss the projects that are listed in here, but potentially more.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilor Towndale. Uh, yes, I have had discussions with um Terry Mear and the Optimist Club. And I am aware of their um their consideration to contribute to our place structure at Optimist Park and. We would absolutely welcome their uh contribution and involvement. And uh I think they are looking, they they are still looking to seek approval from their um from the their their club uh board. Uh, to make that uh contribution, but we have begun discussing um potentially uh the six. Uh, some improvements or enhancements that they would uh like to see to a typical structure that would uh that we would normally install. And so we will be meeting to kind of look at some past submissions that we have received for past playground structures to kind of. Give them an idea as to um what types of products would be available to uh enhance that and and see again what what resonates with them.
Great, thank you.
Any question on the capital projects? Council McIntosh.
I don't know if this related, Jamie, but uh who owns the East End Police Station?
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, that that is us, the city.
Hmm, and we're we're responsible for all the maintenance then and repairs and that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, yes, we do.
What's the condition of that building?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it it's, the condition isn't great. Um, we have identified some issues, um particularly with the foundation of the building. Um, towards the north and I believe the east side where the con- the condition of the concrete foundation is. Um, not great. Um, it's still safe. Um, but if so, there have, we have had discussions. Um, with senior team and and the police force about the long-term plans for that building. Um, in order to address the issues we've identified will require a fairly substantial investment. Um, and as well, uh more investigation to determine exactly the limits. Uh, or the extents of the damage. Um, a- and so I think. At the moment, I think we're all of the mind that the the building is rather aged and it it's been a, it's been. You you reused for this purpose um quite well, but um it likely does not warrant. Um, the the investment required to address these issues. And that the there might, I think, the long-term uh some long-term planning is required to figure out. What what is the future of um the police station i- i- in that part of town?
Yeah, sounds like you put it on life support.
We're we're keeping it uh going and and safe. Uh, but I think, yeah, uh. There needs to be some decisions as to, yeah, how how much do we want to spend to uh fix it up?
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions about the capital projects? Council Card.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, my question is to Jamie, and it follows along with uh. Council McIntosh was brought to your attention. The residents, particularly at the uh and the development down on the cotton mills. Have had some problems in the last few months. I guess better now, but. With vandalism in that area and uh some of the activities of a a certain section of the community. Because that um police station, it's going to be moved, that was police station, has been a very generous description of it. Um. But you've got police, you've got the residents there. Uh. Are you willing to have a sit down with all those parties involved to talk about the future of that building? Should it be relocated to the other side of the road? How can it improve the situation that we have down there with vandalism? And uh would you be willing to to sit in on a meeting with that that group and with uh the people who look after. Development in East End?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I absolutely would be willing to uh sit down and meet with various groups. Um, we have had a discussion with the police and um some of the the condo uh owners. Um, with some of the issues um adjacent to the the uh harbor lands. Um, and have been looking at some of the sort of the vegetation along that side and 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 some lighting to lighting improvements as well. To see uh what potentially could be done in the short term to sort of improve the uh situation. Um, but yes, would be very happy to meet to with stakeholders, yeah.
Okay. Could do it when I, there's a couple of tennis players there too, they can have a afternoon with them. Excellent, Jay.
No other questions on the capital uh projects? All right. So, where do we go from here? That's uh the end of our presentation. Tracy?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. Uh, the question is, where do we go from from here? So if you have any other questions, we're all on uh to answer those questions for council. And uh, go from here.
Council Collins, where?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think just as an an observation, um, my personal. Um, my personal opinion about where we go is I think that it's, we're at the point where uh council leader has to make some changes to the budget based on the political process in which, you know, motion to cut this or cut that or whatever. Or we kind of need to approve the budget. Uh, otherwise, I don't think administration needs to say any more than they've said. And I would suggest that if a, a councillor or councillors have some changes they would like to make to the budget, now would probably be an excellent time. Or otherwise, I think we need to discuss whether we want to approve this budget as it is currently presented. Just an observation.
Thank you, uh councillor Hollingsworth. Uh, Tracy, currently we are at uh two point nine
Zero.
Zero.
Let me just pull that up for one moment again. Uh, yes, with the uh three small reductions that we've made by adding revenue to uh the budget today. The change would be uh seventy eight dollars and fourteen cents for the average residential property, an increase of two point nine zero.
I see councillor McDonald had her hand up.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh I, I move that we adopt the budget as presented. I think that um it, it's a fair budget and it's one that meets our obligations. We want to um support all the services we currently provide. And we also wish to enhance the quality of life in the city. We're adding some uh significant, I think, um and progressive features to life in Cornwall. And the fact that we can do it for a two point nine percent increase is, I think, a tribute to how well administration worked. This wasn't the fastest budget in the world. If anybody looks at it and thinks, gee, in two days and they're ready to go. The fact is that administration's been working on this budget for months. And a- as we can see um in the discussions, but also in the, the um things that have been removed from the budget. And unfortunately, they'll, I hope they'll come back again and we'll be better able to uh to deal with them in the future because they're all very important items. But I think that as it stands right now, uh this is a good budget and we should uh approve it and get on with it. Thank you.
There's a motion by Elaine, was her second or uh? Counter Ebert? Go ahead, councillor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess um councillor McDonald has basically said everything I would have said. I knew administration works on this budget for months. Uh, and then we scanned through it in a few hours and a couple of days. Uh, so I want to make sure that their effort is acknowledged. Uh, we appreciate the many hours and days and weeks and months that you put into this. Uh, we see that you've already removed things from the budget. Um, so I, I, it, it gives me the impression you don't know where else we can cut. And you are the experts here. Uh, and I trust your judgment completely. So I am happy to second the motion to approve the budget as it stands.
Councillor McIntosh.
Yeah, I have a problem with the two point nine. Not gonna do a victory lap or anything, but uh tell you in inflation, it's an inflationary budget. Uh, I've been going through papers online. Most communities our size are coming in at three point two to three point eight percent increases. We can go through this and nickel and dime here and chisel here, be like uh going to Mount Everest with a chisel and a hammer trying to pack away. Tracy, to bring it down, uh say to three, two points four, approximately, how much would we have to cut?
For every quarter percent, we would cut a hundred and eighty one. Uh, so I'll just go back to our screen. So it would have to be approximately two hundred. Oh, sorry about that. Maybe about four hundred.
Four hundred thousand?
Approximately, that gets us, it would have a change of two point three five percent. So maybe three seventy five.
And my colleagues have any idea how to knock four hundred thousand off this budget without eliminating jobs? Without the cutting services, right? He said what we could consider essential services. I'm all ears. But I don't think we do it. I go back to a budget summary, six years ago, I think it was. And uh, one of the people that opposed the budget said he wanted to cut it. He's gonna wanted to paint the top water tower half, one year and half the next. And uh, think about that for a while. That was the only thing he could think of. So somebody come up with the four hundred thousand dollar cuts. I'm sitting here, I'm all ears.
Councillor Bergeron, do you have your hand up? No, sorry. Councillor Towndale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. I almost want to say challenge accepted. Uh, it's not quite it, but uh there, I did take some time earlier today, well, not just today, but over the last few days to look at areas where we could potentially use reserves to find. I'm not saying uh certain restricted reserves, but right now, for example, there's four hundred thousand dollars still in the gas tax reserve that has been unspent. And I think there are a few projects that could be alleviated from the tax base uh with that, those funds, uh without depleting that reserve. It wouldn't be the full four hundred thousand. Uh, I think depending on what I'm looking at, would be, would leave a hundred twenty one thousand in that reserve, but it would reduce the impact on the tax base. Now, I'll talk to the motion at hand. Um, motions on the table. I'm gonna vote against it because I'd like to take a shot at it. Uh, it, it's obviously up to my colleagues. Uh, two point nine percent is not the worst number I've seen. However, I think there is an opportunity to mitigate that hit. Last two years have been difficult for any number of reasons. Uh, obviously COVID being the big one. I think, you know, there are other cities coming in at our, our uh three percent figure and our neighbors are coming in at that level. But if we have an opportunity to reduce that impact on the tax base, I think we need to take it. I really, really strongly believe that. Um, there are a few of the reserves that are over their target budgets. And as a result, you know, if we're gonna follow a long term financial plan, and that's fine, there's still extra movement in and wiggles in those reserves. So I'd like to take the opportunity to explore that. Um, but I'll be against this motion with time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, uh councillor Gardner, then councillor Hollingsworth. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Tracy, thank you for you and your staff and and our C A O for all the work that you've put into this document. I also looked into different communities our size that are came, coming up with uh three point five, three point two, three point eight, and I would have been comfortable at three percent. Uh, so I will support the motion to go ahead. I don't know where else we could cut. I don't, I want the services to remain intact. And so thank you for all your work, Tracy. And I will support the motion. Uh, councillor Hollingsworth.
Uh, thank you, worship. I'm not a big fan of the two point nine percent, I'm not gonna lie. But I should note to my colleagues and, and, and kind of in relation to councillor Towndale's reference. I am never gonna support uh uh tax reduction using reserves. And I'm not gonna support a tax reduction, cutting capital budgets using reserves or financing because they have a minimal impact on the tax base overall. And quite frankly, it's like saying, well, why don't we cut fixing our roof this year so that we can save some money for the, you know, for our bank account? And then next year, the roof will be in worse shape than it was this year. And using money for reserves means, well, I know I need to buy a hundred bucks of groceries this year, this week. And I really am only making eighty dollars a week to pay for those groceries. So what I'll do is I'll keep pulling money out of my bank account to pay for the groceries that I need, that I'm gonna need next week and the week after, and the week after, and the week after that. I would be more than willing to debate any kind of uh reduction in, in capital that comes from the tax base because that's a ongoing operating expense. I would be willing to discuss or listen to anybody who's gonna propose uh services in terms of how we provide those services moving forward. Do we want more? Do we want less? And yes, they will impact staffing. So I'm always willing to debate that and discuss that. Because I think if you wanna actually impact the tax base or the tax rate, you need to be prepared to do that ongoing. In other words, fix the operating, change the operating cost this year because using reserves is a bit of duping yourself in the sense that, yeah, this year it's gonna be cheaper. But next year, if you don't address the operating side, that cost is gonna be there plus inflation. Which means now, not only are you gonna ask the taxpayers to pick up the operating cost this year, at three, you're gonna expect them to come up with four or five percent to make up for the reserve money you used to finance your operating side. So while I'm not a big champion of the budget as it is, I think admin's done the best they can. I think it's up to us, the politicians, to decide what we're prepared to do politically. If we're not prepared to do anything, then I'll approve the budget. But I'm not using reserves and I'm not gonna finance operating. I don't think that's a good idea. It may look good on the bottom line this year. Don't think it's serving our residents over the long term. Just an FYI. Thanks for your time, your worship.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Carr.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I'd like to congratulate our administration for the document they produced and the recommendations they made. At the same time, I'd like to say I'm not in favor of going into more debt. I think our debt load, I don't care what the numbers say in the end, it's well, it's only ten, it's only twelve percent. It's debt. And I think we, we don't know what the future's gonna hold. We're going through this COVID epidemic and uh what is, was it uh? We're not sure what the federal and provincial governments are gonna do. And we have to be prepared to, to look after our own uh situation and protect the residents that live in the city of Cornwall. Uh, I think we have to be prepared for the next twelve months to make adjustments to our budget. I think this budget, more than any other I witnessed, is gonna be um it's gonna be questions that we have to answer all through the year. And so, okay, you know, I know you passed us at the budget, but can we really afford to do that at this time? And as long as we're prepared to uh, to put some, you know, uh conditions there that says, yes, we will look after the future of the community, I'd be prepared to set, to support this budget at three percent. I think that's uh, that's well done. But I, I asked a question of um our treasurer the other day and said, okay, could you tell me how much the uh? When we talk about the um, the Benson Center, what does it actually cost us? And what we, what we agreed upon, when we started, but in the end, what has it cost us? And the only reason I want that information is to say, okay, when you borrow money, you have to pay it back. And I wanna know, what was it? You said we're gonna build a Benson Center, a great facility. Don't misunderstand me. But what did it actually cost us? Because that's what we're gonna be looking at in the future. But uh, congratulations to administration. Did a good job. I'm just uh a little concerned as though many of my colleagues on the amount of debt we're putting in for things that, yeah, maybe we can't afford at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you, uh councillor Bennett.
You're muted.
Still muted.
I won't know.
Good.
Man, uh, technology's fun. So uh, I was just
Welcome to my life, councillor Bennett.
Yeah, I was just saying that uh councillor Hollingsworth had, had said a few things that were on my mind uh in regards to uh how we use our reserves and, and do we really want to dip into those just to, to get a, a smaller uh increase, which is essentially a false increase. Uh, so I had a, a list of things I was going to consider um cutting from this budget and putting motions forward. But as we went through it and discussed those items, it made it harder for me to uh actually put those, those motions forward because clearly the need is there um for a lot of these items. And when I look at what was removed from the budget, there's almost four million dollars worth of uh things that need to be done that were pulled from this budget. Um, and while I understand it and I appreciate it because uh it would have made this increase unbearable. And none of us probably would have voted for that, but there's four million dollars worth of stuff that needs to be done. Uh, that's just gonna be more expensive next year, more expensive the year after that. So uh, at this point, I would not be comfortable making any cuts or suggesting any cuts. Um, I can appreciate uh councillor Towndale wanting to dig into uh the gas tax a little bit. But at the end of the day, that, that money uh can be used for uh some bigger projects down the road that will save uh somebody down the road and, and and it's, it's gonna save us uh five dollars a year on, on uh our, our increase or ten dollars a year. Um, we might have a better use for five or three hundred thousand dollars uh next year. So this is a good budget. Uh, to be honest with you, I was surprised at the increase at the starting point. I, I was fully expecting to see a much bigger number there. Um, so I would have, I have no suggestions for cuts. Uh, the ones I had, as I said, the, the uh, the presentation had changed my mind on, on suggesting those cuts. So I will support this motion uh based on the fact that I have no suggestions at this point uh to make any other, any further cuts. So uh, thank you for the work that was done.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll be voting against the motion on the floor against the budget for the same reasons as the past few years. I, I don't see any more detail than the past few years. The end of the day, uh I would love to have suggestions of where we could find four hundred thousand dollars of cuts. It's not presented in a way that I think we could do that. I'm aware that is not the uh philosophical kind of view of her as a council, and that's fine. For me, uh, I'm gonna reject this. I would like to see some motions to make some cuts. I stand by to support and second any motion to make cuts. And then the other thing I would say is that for me, I would make a motion and say uh, I'd like to see a tax freeze, a budget that comes back with a frozen amount. I, I would make it, for me, that's a relatively simple conversation. And that's how I would keep it. I would have, admit, come back with a budget that is frozen this year, and we deal with the consequences of it. For me, if that means some job losses, if that means some cuts in service, that's not a very big uh, that's something that I'm willing to consider. So the end of the day, I'm aware that uh, that's a different view than many of my colleagues here. I'll be voting against the budget. If it is defeated, I would like to make that motion to see a tax freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I guess everybody's spoken. Uh, well, I'm gonna support it.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see you down there.
That's okay. No, I'm having issue. I joined from work and I'm having issues with uh getting on my camera. Um, if I may have a, a round at it, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, we got our budget books early. I'll be honest with you, I'm not uh in favor of uh the increase. And uh, as it shows uh every year when I vote, I'm not in favor of the increase. Uh, this year is a little different for me because I think that, you know, not only have our business community tried to survive and, you know, our residents have tried to survive and just raising the taxes uh doesn't make sense to me. But getting that budget book early and going through it detailed uh and trying to find, I would have liked for councillor McDonald's uh motion to come after the fact that we could have had uh an opportunity to hear some colleagues, but I, I have to, I have to echo councillor Bennett's words. The things that I was looking at after the presentation, it was no longer an option. And I, I just feel that um if we could hear some or if anybody, but by the sounds of it, I don't hear anything except for looking at uh reserves. Um, so if there are no uh other uh options to uh reduce uh the budget um or make any kind of cuts, or at least look at the cuts, um I'll have to support the the budget as it is. But I was certainly hoping that uh councillor McDonald and he bears The budget as it is, but I was certainly hoping that Counselor McDonald, he bears a motion would have come after. The fact of some of my colleagues have some options to put forward. As Counselor Bennett said, I I don't have that and. So I want to thank administration as well, but I certainly would welcome the opportunity to weigh in on other motions that. Would see reducing this budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel DePell. I just, I'm going to fully support the the motion. You know, this city, I'm going to repeat myself, but this city has gotten, is moving forward. It's moving forward because we move the city forward and we do it by making tough decisions and tough decisions sometimes are not. They're not popular, but they're the right decisions. We look at our asset management plan, our long term financial plan, et cetera. We put those plans together and I think when administration are putting a budget book in front of us. They've got all those things in mind. Sure, are there, there's, there's items here that that were taken out that. I'm sorry to see them take it out, but they can be done next year. They're not going to affect service levels. They're not going to affect. The city as a whole. This, we've got so many compliments this year on the the beautification of our community. And I think that we, if we start cutting and nitpicking, we're going to lose that. And that's what attracts people into our community and that's what attracts developers. And so I'm a hundred percent behind this budget. I think our administration spent a lot of hours. Debating this budget and I'm sure they're disappointed in some ways in some areas, but that's the reality of the world today. So I'm supporting it and I'm, I hope by we get the majority to support it and move forward because this budget's going to work. Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
In favor, Mr. Mayor?
The post? Carrie, thank you very much and thank you for all your input in this, these deliberations. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Good job. Thank you, Maureen. Yes, Counsel McDonald?
Thanks, I I just, I I thank administration obviously for the amount of work they've done. But I don't want to omit the opportunity to thank my colleagues around the table. Who have obviously influenced some of the programs that came forward. And I think of that most strikingly with regard to the work on the waterfront. It because when Jamie named everybody who was on the working committee, that's some of us here too, you know. So that's another really significant part of where we are right now. And thanks to the strategic plan that we all hammered out, but to those counselors around the table who have really pushed some of those. Items onto the agenda and kept them front and center. This is a pretty exciting place we're at now in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else? But I'm CEO, do you have anything to offer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would just like to extend my appreciation to our senior team and our staff. Everybody is pulled together with this budget. We do work quite a bit behind the scenes, but I think you can see that we've had some new faces. This year, I think they've done exceptionally well. I would also like to express my appreciation to the mayor and council. Virtual meetings are not always the easiest meetings to work through a document like this. But we certainly appreciate your support as we have always had and we look forward to twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Or did we do that? All right. Counsel Ebert, Counsel Bennett, all in favor?
In favor, Mr. Mayor.
Carrie, thank you.
And I just want to announce then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that the council meeting, special council meeting scheduled for January thirty first. And February first to continue the budget are no longer required and will be taken off. Our schedule.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night. Oh, Counsel McDonald?
Just speaking of dates, do we have firm dates yet for our training in regards to tooth and reconciliation? I know there've been some tentative dates thrown out there.
If I may through you, Mr. Mayor, we have, I was circulating some dates to council to check their availability. And currently I am planning for. Monday, February the seventh at five P M.
Wonderful, thank you.
Provided, provided that that data is still available for the for the organization I'm working with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good evening.
Night, everyone.